Oh, there it is. All right, noting that it is 7:05, I will call this meeting of the Committee of the Whole to Order. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Present.
Mayor Aradefrada.
Here.
Elder Gerhart.
Here.
Elder Herbst is absent with excuse. Elder Jetser.
Here.
Elder Maldonado.
Here.
Elder Strassmann. Elder Udell.
Here.
And Elder Wheeler.
Here.
You got it, Cor.
Yay. Our next item is the approval of minutes of the June 28 Committee of the Whole Meeting.
So move.
Motion's made by Joe.
Oh, second.
Second by, uh...
Big one.
Jim. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the discussion of the, oh, I'm sorry, public appearances for non-agenda items, but there's no public here, so we will skip that and move to discussion on municipal budgeting and budget priorities with our esteemed Finance Director, Ms. D. Dodge.
Thank you, and I'll actually roll right into the next agenda item, too, if that's okay.
Maybe.
So since we adopted the CIP last night, that means budget starts today. So today's presentation is the same one that you've seen last year with some updated information, also a lot of similarity to the CIP kickoff that we saw. So there's a lot of slides, especially in the beginning, that I'm not going to talk about, but they're in there for your reference. What I did is I put, if you can see it, there's a little red star in the top right corner. Those are the ones I'm going to actually talk about. So you'll see at the beginning, we will cruise a lot faster. I'm assuming the bulk of what we want to talk about tonight is the other funding sources and kind of where we go from here. So, let's get started. So the first part will be the normal part. I do have the homework that you guys asked for from the last Committee of the Whole Meeting, Whole Meeting, so I have a lot of those answers for your information now. And then we'll also talk about next steps in any of those options that we've talked about. So governmental accounting is different. We've got a lot of terminology in here. Taxes on average home and apartment, all of that information is included in here. As we go into the budget process, though, the couple statistics to keep in mind. One is that 41% of our budget is spent on public safety. You can see Public Works is 7%. Those statistics will be important when we start talking about the new shared revenue aid payment that we're going to get. And then you can see how the rest of our levy funds are broken out. When we look at the general fund, main operating fund of the city, the bulk of our budget is spent on personnel. About 70% of the budget is spent on staff. That makes sense because here at the city, we are a service provider, and to provide services, you need to have staff to provide those services. So that's an important statistic. And then here in Wisconsin, we are mostly property tax funded. So again, in the general fund, we are 72% property tax funded with the 2023 budget. We will talk about that additional shared revenue, so this will shift a little bit for next year, but for 2023, we were 71, 72% funded by property taxes. So the purpose of the budget, you know, the CIP was kind of that long-range planning document. The budget is really just looking at the next year. And what it does at the end of the day is decide what level of services you want to provide, what the additional revenues are that you have to pay for those services, and then whatever the difference is, is the property taxes that we need to collect from all of our property owners in order to fund the budget. That tax levy, once we set it, the night of the budget adoption, is in how we charge on the tax bills for our portion of the bill. Speaking of which, even though the city is the one that sends out those tax bills and we do the collection of the first installment, it's actually only about a third, 35%, of the tax bill is actually for city government purposes, which is another thing that can get confusing sometimes for taxpayers. Wanted to stop on this slide, not necessarily talk about assessed value and equalized value, but the assessing department for this year is planning to do a maintenance year, which means that the bulk of the properties will have the same assessed value last year as what they will this year. There are some exceptions, notably, you know, new construction. If you have a new building or an addition or a demolition, all of those changes will still be reflected, and some other items. But for the bulk of our properties, it should be the same value last year as it will be this coming year. And so the downside of that is that our ratio, where we compare what our total assessed value is to what the equalized value or the fair market kind of equivalent, usually we're right around 100%. This year, we expect will be about 80% because the market, as I'm sure you know, has gone crazy still. Prices are still going up, but if most people's values are staying the same, there'll be a bigger difference between those two values. So that ratio is expected to be somewhere around 80%. We'll find out officially many months from now.
So if we do that for 2024, I presume that means that 2025, people are going to see some fairly large assessment increases.
So if the market continues the way it is, yes. If there's a cooling down, maybe that will adjust, but generally, they will see two years' worth of increases when they get their new assessed value the following year. Yes.
And how is the Southdale area being affected by this?
That I can't answer.
I can answer that.
Excellent.
Good.
Thank you.
So in addition to doing a maintenance year for, I guess, what we could say, Fitchburg pre-Town of Madison attachment, the assessing department has focused a lot of their efforts this year on valuing the Southdale parcels and aligning those with the other pre-existing City of Fitchburg parcels. So I think it's safe to say that those values have all increased, in some cases rather notably. So that's where they're at with the Southdale.
So I know, I'm sure assessment notices have already gone out in Board of Review met last week?
This week, yeah.
Okay. Are the people coming to Board of Review mostly Southdale people, or what are we seeing?
I don't have a complete list. I know there were at least a couple of Southdale property owners who appeared at Board of Review. Otherwise, the other majority of those folks who filed Board of Review appeals are property owners who have already contested previous assessments.
Oh, okay.
Question, Misty.
Yeah. Oops, sorry.
Yeah, so the, you said that the assessment ratio is going to dip down now, like 80%. But it's also true that the average property in Fitchburg has a higher assessed value than neighboring municipalities. Is that correct? And what does that say about how the state of Wisconsin is placing a value on the city?
Yeah, so the average home here in the City of Fitchburg, we only do that calculation based on assessed values. So that's when our assessors go out and look property by property at data. The equalized value, which is how we compare that ratio, is when the Department of Revenue sets that value based on sales across the city. So that's just a global amount, not a property by property amount. And then we use this ratio to try to figure out what that property by property amount would be. So I have not compared our average home to other neighboring municipalities, especially if you don't consider the ratio. But the benefit of having this ratio is that you can do that comparison. So you don't necessarily want to compare an average assessed value here in Fitchburg with an average assessed value in neighboring community because they might have a different assessment cycle. You know, we're doing maintenance this year. They might not have reassessed for several years, so there's that discrepancy there. The benefit of having that equalized value is you should be more comparable then across communities. So while I don't have that data, it is accessible by using that equalized value. Does that answer the question?
I'm not entirely sure. I guess I, I was under the impression that assessed values in Fitchburg were higher than surrounding municipalities. I'm not sure if I looked that up or if that was something I heard in casual conversation. But if that's true, and our assessment ratio is now significantly below 100%, then does that mean that the state is overvaluing Fitchburg? Or, you know, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so this might be a great conversation for you and I to have offline along with the city assessor to try to talk about how all that stuff works. Happy to schedule a time. It wouldn't surprise me too much if solely by the ratio, City of Fitchburg's are assessed higher because we are, generally, we revale every year, so we're closer to that 100%. A lot of our neighboring communities will let that ratio drop, and then when they're required to, go back in and do a reassessment. But as you'll see in the next handful of slides, just because our assessed values might be higher because we reassess does not mean that our tax bills are higher simply because of those value increases. So I'll reach out to you, and we'll schedule a time for you, me, and Chris to chat. So that leads in, great. So we do get that question a lot from the public in particular. So this year, because most of the values are the same, a lot of property owners might say, well, then, great, my taxes are going to be the same. But that's not necessarily true. As we know, through the budget process, all of our costs are going up. So your percentage of the total amount of property taxes might be the same, but your total bill will likely go up. Just like if your assessed value, if we did 100% revale and everybody was reevaluated and all the properties went up, say, 50% even, if everybody's property went up the same 50%, everybody's tax bill would be the same amount as before, absent budget changes. And the reason why is because of how the property tax bill calculations work. And so I like to use this relatively brief analogy of baking a cake. So when we set our budget, we look at what service level we want to provide and how much that costs. We subtract out all of our other revenue sources, you know, fees for service, state aid, miscellaneous revenue interest, that type of stuff. And whatever that gap is, that's how much in property taxes we need to collect. And so we do that here at the city. They also do that at each one of our school districts, Dane County, and M A T C, and they provide that information to me that says, this is how much we need the City of Fitchburg to collect in property taxes on our behalf. And so I bake that cake, and I figure out how much in total I need to collect. Then we do have TID districts. So the TID district properties pay the exact same tax rate as everybody else, but their taxes, instead of going to pay for the budgets of all of those municipalities, their taxes go to the separate TID fund instead. But they still pay taxes. So think of that like the frosting that goes around the cake. So that's how much taxes I need to collect, is everybody's budget plus the TID amount. And then we take those assessed values, and we figure out how much of that piece of cake every property receives through their tax bill amount. So if your value is 1% of the city's overall value, you will get 1% bill for all of those amounts that I need to collect. So this is a way to help kind of demonstrate that that value is important, not necessarily because it ties to your tax rate change, but because it ties to your responsible portion of the overall. I do have some examples in here to try to illustrate that. I'm not going to go through them, but it talks about, you know, if the average home is this and the budgets do that, they're all included in here for your information. Budget constraints, so this is always the tough part of the presentation. So we do have the Optional Expenditure Restraint Program, which I won't talk about much because we don't expect that to be a problem this year. We have used some good strategies to set aside capacity in prior years, so I don't expect that to be a problem. And then state-imposed levy limits is going to be our bigger issue that we have to address. So this talks about the Expenditure Restraint Program and then levy limits.
Misty?
Yep.
Yeah. So will, you know, like if we have to do additional revenue streams or referendum or wheel tax or whatever, is that going to affect our expenditure restraint?
In normal circumstances, yes. However, because of the shared revenue bill that's coming through, whatever amount we get for 2024 is going to be the exact same amount that we get for 2025. So depending on timing, that may or may not impact it. But again, we have that strategy that's kind of built into our budget to help. And then also depending, so if you do the wheel tax and it all goes to capital, that has a different calculation for the levy limits than if it goes into operating and expenditure restraint.
Is that happening for all municipalities, that the amount in 2024 and the amount in 2025 will be the same?
It is, and so that's been a controversial item. The League of Municipalities tried to negotiate like a three-year average or, you know, something because there were some municipalities that dropped out of the program with their 2023 budget, so they won't be getting a payment in 2024, and now they won't get a payment for '25 either. So we did qualify for 2023. We will be getting a 2024 payment. Granted, it will be less because our TIDs closed, but we at least will get that same amount for '25. So this one, I know we talked about this during the CIP time, but just wanted to reiterate. The problem that we have with levy limits is that levy limits is based off of net new construction. And so as of right now, we think we'll have net new construction of about 2.8% to 3%. But then if you look at what inflation is, you know, generally the 2% to 3%, but right now, quite a bit higher still. And then we have additional needs that we have because of that net new construction. You know, when you build new things and have new residents, you generally have more services that you need to provide. So those additional needs are also not factored into levy limits. So we always go into this based on our current circumstances with kind of this off-kilter So the big problem for Fitchburg, we've had great net new construction lately that's been able to absorb these inflationary increases that we've seen, but now is that net new construction is lower than inflation, that's going to be much harder for us to deal with kind of our status quo commitments. And so I'd also like to remind you that in those years where we do have net new construction that is greater than inflation, and so there is that little bit of flexibility, it's important that council makes wise decisions in those good years so that decisions in bad years or not as great years are a little bit easier or not quite as hard as what they could be. So I think it's important that we always have this conversation, always talk about the future and what it means for future budgets, even if we do have a really great net new construction year. We do get a levy limit adjustment for TID closures. So as you know, we've closed TID 4 and TID 15 in the last few months. TID 4, we closed that and are getting the levy limit adjustment for the 2024 budget. However, the council has already spent that with the 2023 budget, other than $185,000 that was spent in the CIP that was just adopted last night. So that additional levy limit capacity was very helpful. It helped us balance, but it's not something that will be available for the 2024 budget. And then TID 15 is a little bit of a different timing. That levy limit adjustment, we will get in the 2025 budget. Won't be as much because it was a much smaller TID, but 100% of that levy limit adjustment is already planned to be spent in the CIP in 2025. So that's not something that we could plan to spend early with the operating budget because it's already accounted for. We do have other pressing budget issues that we need to keep in mind as we go through this process. Wages and benefits. If you remember, 70% of our general fund budget is on personnel, so anytime there's changes in personnel, status quo costs, we'll have to absorb that. So union negotiation increases, cost of living and merit increases for staff. There's a lot of interest in an increase in the paid-on-call wage level, insurance premiums, including health insurance, workers' comp insurance, dental insurance, all of those are going up. And then retirement contribution increases. I did report to the Finance Committee last night that the WRS rate increase for public safety is of 8% and for non-public safety is 1.5%. So that will be pretty significant for us to absorb. So let me just reiterate, so if there's an 8% increase in this particular expense in our net new construction, or how much we're allowed to increase is 2.8% or 3%, there's a gap there that we're going to have to address. And then, of course, there's additional staffing requests. All of your departments are struggling to a lot of extent, could definitely use some additional staff in order to maintain status quo, and especially if we want to enhance our services. And also inflation. I'm sure you've all seen this at home. The city is not immune to inflation either. Then in the adopted CIP from last night, there were some operating impacts that were included, notably like the hub will have the operating costs hopefully coming online in 2024. Last year, the metro transit route increase was approved, knowing that that will hit in 2024. And then there's additional facilities that we're talking about building or constructing that all have operating costs that we need to plan for as well. And it's not just the operating, but like the, you know, toilet paper, electricity, that stuff. It's also maintenance when things break and replacement when big things break. So all of those things need to be planned for in order to stay financially sustainable. There are some other adjustments that we get for the levy limit, which I just cruised past, if they're in there, if you're curious. This is one I'd like to pause on again. This is new. So this will impact us pretty significantly. One of the last-minute changes with the shared revenue proposal was this change in how levy limits are adjusted for TIDs. So under current law, and these new TIDs that we're working on creating now, as well as any TIDs that we create before September 30 of 2024, will fall under the current rules. Any TIDs we create after September 30 of 2024 will fall under these new rules, which are significantly lower than what we are getting now from a levy limit adjustment. So right now, what we get is the value that's generated, the net new construction that's generated within the TID, that counts towards net new construction 100%. You know, these are new buildings, we have to provide services for, we get to adjust our levy for that. And then when it closes, how I just talked about with TID 4 and TID 15, when it closes, we get about half of the value that, or the tax increment that's generated in the last year of service. So, you know, if the base starts here and you do all that growing, we get about half of the revenue that all of that growth has created in that last year before we closed it. What the new proposal is, is that throughout the life, you only get 90% considered in our current year levy limit calculation, and it's also new construction and not net new. So I can see some games, maybe this could be helpful in like a redevelopment TID or something like that, but for the most part, 90% is obviously not as good as 100%. The bigger difference is when the TID closes. So general rule will be we'll get a 10% adjustment for just the new construction. So you know how the base starts here and you go through 20 years and everything increases because that's how the world works? All of that appreciation and value, we get no credit for anymore in the levy limit adjustment. We only get it for the actual net new construction that was created each year. And then instead of it being about 50%, it's 10%. And then if we close it early, we could get a 25% adjustment. So it's a much smaller percentage, but it's also a much smaller base that that percentage is applied to. All that information is on here. I'm sure there's a lot to digest in a short amount of time, but the takeaway is that, in my opinion, the city should seriously consider creating new TIDs before this law kicks in. I know it was a lot of work, especially for economic development, I'm sorry, Mike and Joyce, to get those three TIDs that we're working on now done, but if there's anything that we've got that we think might happen in the really near future, we really should get that tool established now while the rules are more favorable.
How much of the capacity that we have there?
Yep, so we have a fair amount of capacity there. Plus, I would focus on the areas that are vacant right now, the vacant land areas that we have, so that the value that you would be adding would be minimal as compared to, you know, large buildings that would be redeveloped. So I, it's a conversation that we're having. Hopefully, we can get some going, but again, it's a pretty heavy lift for economic development in particular.
Yeah, but when is the deadline next year?
9:30, '24. Yep, so that would mean we'd want to start spring probably of '24 because there's quite a long process to get all of that stuff put together. And we don't want to create a TID just to create a TID if we don't think development's going to happen for 20 years, so I'm not by any means saying that. But if we think something will happen in the next three to five, that's probably something we should consider. More to come.
Question, can I jump in with a question? Sorry.
Yeah.
Um, is there some guidance about TID amendments? It's like, so if we amended TID after that 9:30 date, would the TID all be subject to these new rules or would it, is there any guidance on that?
Yeah, it's based on created date. So if we're amending one that was created before this new magic date, it would still be under the current rules versus the new rules. And I'll say, all of this impact from the shared revenue proposal is kind of coming out in pieces. You know, we learned that new nuance about it being just net new construction and not appreciated value like two days ago. So things are still kind of coming out as we go, so I'm not sure what other details still need to be worked out. Moving on. So this chart here is the city's net new construction versus inflation. For inflation, I use CPIU for the year-over-year. So you can see, you know, back when the market crashed, the net new construction for us kind of went down, but it was still okay. And then the red, so the red line is the net new construction, which was much higher, or at least higher than what inflation was from about 2014 to 2022, they were pretty close. But now we're getting to the point where inflation is quite a bit higher than what our net new construction is. And frankly, we're in a much better spot than a lot of other communities, and I think is why we've been able to stave off a referendum as long as we have, because we have had that really great net new construction, but it's come into a point now where we need to address it.
If you go back to that slide, one of the things that has concerned me for a long time is viewing these things as a percentage increase. Because as the city has more and more total valuation, that percentage, you know, 1%, 2%, 3%, increases every year, and expecting there to be just unlimited funds, unlimited growth potential is not a sustainable formula. We, I mean, there's going to come a point where we simply cannot develop at anything close to this kind of a pace. And that's just because of the physical limitations of what we can do as a city. So I, it's disturbing that this is the thought process that goes into it, and I realize we, you know, these rules aren't dictated, are dictated to us, we don't get to make our own rules, but at some point, something, this is going to continue to break. You know, this, what they, what the legislature has done is like a temporary patch on an already oozing wound, and it's, the process is just going to continue to break until somebody figures out a different way to do all of this. So it's helpful to look at a chart like that, but we really need to get into a different, more sustainable way of thinking about how we do our funding.
Yes, and if anybody has any pull at the legislature, I have lots of opinions on levy limits that I would love to share. But 100% agree. You know, even just us taking over the Town of Madison, we now need a lot more new buildings just to hit the same percentage because our base is bigger, which is exactly your point. And so we saw it quite dramatically this year.
Is that why there's that dip?
For net new construction, partially. Also, we had a lot of great, large, commercial buildings the last couple of years. You think the multiple Pro-Mega buildings that we've had, that new Sub-Zero building, I can't list, there's a lot of multifamilies that have all gone up recently. That's where you get a lot of your net new construction. You know, building a bunch of single-family homes, even if they're half a million dollars, takes a lot to add up to, say, a $50 million commercial building.
One of your earlier slides, I'm sorry. I have that for 3%.
Oh, yep.
Net new construction, we would need 130 million?
Yeah. We need a big bill.
3% is 140 million, and that's if we exclude the Town of Madison base value, because nothing has been easy with this Town of Madison thing. So if we have to include Town of Madison in our base for this year, it'll take even more to get there. So I do have a whole slide because I do have lots of thoughts about net new construction being used for levy limits, and a lot of it's what you were talking about, Alder Allen. So it's, you know, based on the restriction of tying property tax increases to net new construction, but it assumes that net new construction- But it assumes that net new construction is the only reason why our expenditures will increase. You know, it's only because of new buildings being built, where we all know that that's not true. In fact, inflation is often higher, as we've seen recently. But then also that net new construction has its own service demands on top of it. It also doesn't account for tax exempt properties. So you know, a tax exempt property comes into the city, they build this great building, they now need services from the city. But since they don't have a value, they're exempt, they don't count towards our net new construction. And then state manufacturing properties are also at a significant discount from what they would be if they were assessed by the city because of a policy decision. Other references in there, if you're interested. Have just a couple of slides about the ARPA and TID closure investment plan. So y'all know the history of how we got there. This is updated, but does not include the amendments that were approved last night. So that's not in here. But based on the mayor's proposed, we were about $775,000 overextended on our TID closure money and real close to where we need to be for the ARPA money. And that does include TID 6, which is final, also an estimate for TID 4 and TID 15. So it includes all of the TIDS that we are expecting to close soon. So my point here is just that we'll have to do some prioritization again with the 2024 budget about how we want to spend that money. Shared revenue proposal. So I've been talking about it as though, you know, everybody knows what I'm talking about. So the legislature did approve a package that included additional shared revenue from the state to the local level, which has been huge. You know, the league's goal was more sustainable and growing, and frankly, they got there. You know, we're going to get a decent amount of revenue, which is fantastic. You know, we really could use the help, but it will not solve our long-term financial concerns that we have. But if we look at what was provided, so for the 2024 budget, looking at just Fitchburg, we expect to get an additional $766,000. So that is definitely more. Town of Madison, not sure exactly how they're going to allocate that. Could be nothing. It could be based on the formula, which we'd get about an extra $30,000. It could be based on how they were supposed to do the original shared revenue, which would be another 175,000. So there's quite a range here on what our impact will be for the town of Madison. And we frankly just don't know how the DOR is going to handle that, and they don't know either. So we'll keep you posted as we go there. But it is, the shared revenue pot in total is connected to sales tax. So right now, there's a 5% sales tax. That 1% of that 5% is going to go to local governments. So it's sustainable. You know, now there is a funding source connected to the shared revenue program rather than the state having to budget for it individually each time. So that's huge. You know, we set aside money because we know that shared revenue might go away at any moment. Like 10, 15 years ago, which doesn't feel like that long ago, there actually was a pretty serious proposal to stop doing shared revenue altogether. So having it connected to this sustainable source is a really big deal. And then growing, since it's tied to that sales tax amount, it is expected to grow for the most part as the economy grows. So they already have identified what our increase will be for 2025, which is a 2.3% increase. So that's fantastic, but shared revenue is only a small percentage of our budget. So while any amount of increase is fantastic, it's also not going to solve all of our financial concerns.
How much do we receive in shared revenue, say, for the 2023 budget?
Yeah. So the shared revenue piece that this is talking about, we currently get 303,000. So we got a pretty significant increase.
So the 766 is the new number or is that the increase?
That's the increase.
So we'll get roughly a million dollars?
Correct.
Okay.
And then that million dollars will increase the 2.3%. I thought this was an interesting chart from the Wisconsin Policy Forum that shows kind of how the different municipalities shook out. And then this is a chart that I found off of the league that shows how sales tax has grown. So you can see for the most part, sales tax has gone up. You know, the economy continues to go up, though there were a couple of dips. So we should plan for a dip, but at least for the most part, it should be a growing revenue source for us. We talk about how we can spend that 765,000. There are restrictions. So it has to be spent on police, fire, EMS, dispatch, public works, transportation, or courts. It cannot be used on administration, cannot be used on parks. It has to be used on just these particular items, and that was called out in the statute.
I was going to bring this up later, but I know that City of Madison implemented the CARES program. Would that fall under that acceptable use?
So I don't know what the CARES program is. Is that the COVID money?
No, that's their mental health response. I would, I can't say for certain, Alder Maldonado. My suspicion would be no, unless it could be tied to perhaps an emergency medical service. I think it'll be, we could pose the question at some point if the council would like, but it may not.
Yeah. So I'm just, I have an article I'm looking at on it. And it looks like in Madison, it's run through the fire department in consultation with other, yeah, journey. So if there could be clarification on that, it would be appreciated.
Yeah, there's a lot of clarification that needs to be done. The DOR is working on a lot of different emergency rules. At this point, these, this list is what's listed specifically in the statute. And as you know, everything is subject to interpretation. So yeah, more to come for sure.
So does, can the additional shared revenue be used on existing expenditures?
Status quo expenditures? Yes. So like the increase that we give to police personnel could count towards our requirement to spend this money. Yes. It doesn't have to be on, say, new things or new staff. No.
So, I mean, if it's $760,000, we can probably eat that up pretty fast with those things. So that's not going to really affect, that's not really going to affect how we would do things in a referendum if we needed to hire new firefighters or police officers. We don't have to necessarily set us, take that out of the referendum and use it for, use this money for that.
Correct. Yep. This can go towards status quo if you wanted to use the referendum for, say, new things. That would be an option.
One other question that you haven't mentioned yet, and maybe it's coming up. But I know there was discussion about personal property tax.
It's coming up.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll wait then. I'll be patient.
Excellent. So these categories, it's a small list, but it is the bulk of how we spend our money. You know, public safety was, I already forgot the percentage. Oh, man. Then public works was a decent, thank you. It's been a long day. So yeah, so the fair amount of our budget is already spent in these categories. So I don't have a suspect that we'll have a problem being able to spend this money, no matter how the council wants to deploy it.
Public works and transportation, are those kind of new additions to this? I thought when I had read about this earlier, it was strictly public safety.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, they were breaking up as far as I could hear. Could you repeat the question?
I thought when I was reading about this earlier, it was strictly for public safety. Are public works and transportation kind of new additions to this?
Yes. So earlier iterations were public safety and transportation. But then the final statute also includes dispatch, public works, and courts specifically called out. And I'll say there was a lot of movement on this whole thing. So it was a flurry of activity that we were trying to keep up on to figure out what was going on. Huge kudos to Tony in particular at the league. Even being able to get this across the finish line was huge. But yes, things were moving really fast. And while, you know, that TID levy limit change is very bad for us, you know, having additional shared revenue is good. So it's, you know, compromise is what needs to happen.
I have a question. So the uses when in police, fire, EMS are for staffing? Or also can be used for capital improvements?
I believe it's non-capital.
Oh, no.
And I'll get on, there's another slide that talks about a new maintenance of effort requirement that plays into this conversation as well. But I believe it's just operating.
Okay.
Again, we'll find out more as the DOR puts the rules out. And then we likely will need to certify to the DOR how we spent the money. So I'll likely need to file a form that says this is how we did it, along with the backup documentation. So while there is likely some creativity that can go into all of this, we will need to certify something. So maintenance of effort, this is one of those not so great things that we have to follow. Get on my soapbox for just a moment. I believe strongly in local control. I feel like you as elected leader should be able to lead the city financially as well as politically and policy driven. But the legislature has now come in and said that we are required to spend our money in certain ways. So there are, it's a new requirement. It is a year after year requirement. So we'll compare '23 to '24, then '24 to '25, '25 to '26. So it needs to be continually at least maintained, if not growing. And there's two categories. On the police side, we have to certify any one of these. So we have to certify that we've had the same number of sworn officers, the same number of property taxes spent on personnel costs for sworn officers, or the same or more percent of our property tax levy spent on sworn officers. So it doesn't sound terrible. The big thing I'm concerned about though is vacancies. So the number of sworn officers is employed, not budgeted. And the amount of money spent on these officers is spent, not budgeted. So we can have all the great intentions of having a full staff, and we want to do it. But if we don't have the bodies to fill those positions, we might run into trouble with the maintenance of effort requirement. So there's a lot of concern that we're continuing to have. And I'll say the Department of Revenue has not finalized how this is all going to look. I learned today that they plan to put that out in November, which of course is after we adopt our budget. So lots of moving pieces still that we'll have to address. So that's the police side. On the fire and EMS side, and I don't exactly know how this is going to work because we have them separate. I have that question already submitted to find out how that's going to work. But we have to certify two of the four things that are listed here. So non-capital expenditures, number of FTE firefighters and EMS, the level of training and licensure, and the response time, though we can adjust it for where the calls occurred. But again, my concerns are it's spent, not budgeted, and employed, not budgeted. So we're going to have to be conscious of that, I guess, as we move forward. And it's a pretty stiff penalty. So if we don't qualify, in the statute right now, it says it's a 15% penalty of our new shared revenue amount. So it's pretty stiff. There's also a lot of confusion right now, as in if you don't qualify for the maintenance of effort in year one, are you able to recertify the next year and get that 15% back for the following year? Or is it a 15% cut now from here on an eternity? That's another big question that's out there right now that we hope goes our way.
This is insane.
Everything comes with strings.
This, I mean, we aren't having this problem, but there are communities in Wisconsin that are seeing decreases in population. And for a community like that, this is a disaster. So, I mean, it seems like it's, it seems like it's just set out to hurt smaller communities as much as possible.
Yeah. So I'll say, my understanding is some of the compromise came where they really want that shared revenue money to go towards public safety and other things, but really the focus on at least part of the legislature was on public safety. So this was kind of the stick that they associated with it. Again, the league was not happy about it. Municipalities are not necessarily happy about it. But if that's what got us over the hurdle to get us $766,000 more every year, you know, it is what it is.
One, oh, okay.
So the employed versus budgeted seems, I mean, that's huge, huge difference. And it also just seems counterintuitive to their goal of making this the stick that they're trying to create. Like, is it just, what, what point in the year do we certify that number? Is it just the highest number employed at some point during the year? Is it a certain date? Like, how do we even, how do you even do that?
Yeah, exactly, I think, is my response to that. So there's, as with anything, the legislature always has kind of a goal and an intent. And then the devil comes out in the details as you're figuring it out. So that's another one. The league fought really hard against the employed versus the budgeted piece. And it was one that just was a sticking point in order to get this done.
So it was very intentional. It wasn't, okay. All right.
So my concern with number one with the police is that we really need to, you know, look at the employee number. Maybe police department are going to start accepting anyone. You know, lower requirements and we need a body.
That's an interesting point.
Yeah.
Unintended consequences are also very common in broad legislation like this.
Additionally, it's going to discourage municipalities from hiring a whole bunch of new people in any given year, right? Because they're going to be like, well, if we hire some of these people and some of them quit, we're going to, we're going to have, you know, penalty to pay here. And so if we hire fewer people, we can put more effort into them and be sure they're going to stick around.
Yes. And so I think part of the reason why there's at least three options and we only have to certify one of the three is that maybe there's some way to, you know, maybe you do have a lot of vacancies, but you still spend a bunch of property taxes on staff for fill-in-the-blank reason. Maybe there's some flexibility there, but you guys are absolutely right. Overtime. Yep. Not training though. It has to be on personnel costs. So I would suspect training doesn't count. But that's another good question. In my world, personnel is just wages and benefits.
Oh, okay.
So I'm trying to think about this played out in real life. So right now, we have how many vacancies?
11?
No.
Or no?
Number nine?
I think we're at seven, seven or eight.
A lot is the answer.
Yeah.
Right. So would it start as a baseline from the number of people that we have?
In 2023. And then that will compare to '24.
Oh, really?
But then '24 will be compared to '25?
Exactly. So there's some programs where, you know, the year that you implement is kind of your base year and you just always have to be above that. This program is not that. It's cumulative year after year.
So if there's ever a bad year in which just a bunch of people retire, it's basically like, do this in a year or else, or do one of the other two?
I want to retire in the year.
Or else you get 15?
15% cut.
That's wild.
I suspect, this is just my opinion, that in the first couple of years of this, that there's going to be a lot of unintended consequences and the municipalities are going to be really trying to lobby hard to get some rules changed.
Yeah.
And I'll say we're already started. You know, we've had multiple meetings, even just on the finance director level of working with the league and then working with the DOR to try to clean up some of this stuff that we don't believe was intended. But we'll see.
Well, some of it may require going back and changing the statute again, too.
Exactly.
Which I don't know if this legislature is going to be thrilled to do that.
Right. And so the DOR is working on the emergency rules right now, which is basically the interpretation of the legislature, of the statute. So we'll see what comes out of those. And then they're generally open to conversations throughout the process before those final emergency rules are issued, but we haven't gotten there yet. Another good thing that's in this proposal is the innovation fund. So the innovation fund is $300 million that was set aside and is designed to encourage local municipalities to consolidate and be more efficient through those shared services. So it's another one, the DOR is working on those emergency rules to figure out what this all means. But public safety is prioritized. It is a competitive program. Once the $300 million is gone, the program is done. The incentive is 25% of the costs of the greater of either the entity with the highest cost before it was consolidated. Or if you have more than two people consolidating, it's everybody except the highest person, 25% of those costs. So 25%, and then that's for three years. So it's a 25%, I guess, kick in for those three years to help incentivize it. But in order to qualify, you do have to have a savings requirement. So you have to have a 10% savings. 5% of that has to be, or 5% of the 10% has to be realized within 24 months. And you have to realize the full 10% within 36 months. This is all we know at this point. There's going to be a lot of conversation around this. If it's something the city is even interested in doing, we'll need to see what those rules and requirements and strategies will be. But wanted to put it out there because I know there's been a lot of conversation throughout the state about this program and what it could do.
Do you have just a hypothetical example of what might be something that could be done to save 10% of something?
Yes. So totally hypothetical example, and I'll use myself so I don't get anybody mad. We could consolidate finance departments. So we could say, hey, City of Verona, you have a finance department. We have a finance department. Let's work together and have one finance department. Let's work together and have one finance department. There's complications there, but, so then you would take, as long as there could be a savings of 10% realized over that short amount of term, time by consolidating, you could be eligible through this competitive program. And then the incentive would be 25% of whoever paid more for their finance department before they consolidated. So we're bigger, we probably pay more for finance staff. We'd get 25% of our costs for the next three years kicked in from the state to offset those costs.
So I suppose our, our already, the things we've already done wouldn't qualify, like the MPSIS with the other municipalities or Fitch Verona EMS, those, those ones that we already do wouldn't, wouldn't qualify because they're already existing programs?
Exactly. That was a point of contention where some municipalities too. There's some people that are even in the middle of the process doing a consolidation. And because it will be in the middle of the process before these emergency rules are done, they won't qualify either.
Wow.
At least as of now. I mean, things might change tomorrow. So take all of this with a grain of salt.
So it says, "Public safety prioritized in competitive program," but, I mean, this could hypothetically apply to any type of a service?
So there's a lot, there's a whole laundry list of things that actually could qualify, and like HR and administration, and those things are all included. I don't remember everything on the list, but I would say it was like 10 different things. Moving on, maybe. Personal property tax repeal. So this is one of the things that made me exceptionally happy. So personal property tax. So this is the tax on businesses' property within the building. So not the real estate, not the land, not the building, but the stuff that's inside the building, either for a business or if you have a home business. That's what the personal property is. That is being repealed as of 1/1/24. So that means when I send tax bills out for December of 2023, personal property will still be included, but not the next year after that. I think this is fantastic. There's quite a significant administrative burden when we talk about PP tax. The assessing department has to, you know, gather that information. They have to analyze it and they have to value it. My department has to print and mail tax bills and collect it. And then on the backend, too, anybody that doesn't pay their property, their personal property tax bill falls 100% on the city. So even though only 35% of that bill actually went to us, 100% of that bill is my, is the City of Pittsburgh's responsibility if they don't pay it. So there's that bad debt obligation there, too. And so over the last 10 years, we've written off about $10,000 a year in that bad debt. And as of today, we have additional exposure of about $33,000. So not necessarily huge in the whole scheme of things for the bad debt piece, but I'd love to be able to get rid of that piece. The bigger thing to me is that administrative burden. It was a lot of work. And sometimes I would send out $4 tax bills, which just didn't seem to make sense.
Yeah, that was going to be my next question. That was one of the questions I wanted to ask is how much does Pittsburgh collect in the, in personal property tax?
I should know that number, and I don't. I can get it for you. But the good news on this program is the state is going to backfill that amount. So I'm going to use a hypothetical number because I don't remember it. Let's say we collect $5 million in personal property, which is outrageous. But let's say it was $5 million. That full $5 million will come back to us from the state, rather than us having to divvy that out to all of the other property owners. So if you go back to the cake example, right? My cake is still going to be the same. I still need to collect the same amount of money. It's just there's fewer people that are getting pieces of it. So it would, if we weren't getting it backfilled, we'd have the same, we'd have everybody's piece getting to be a little bit bigger. Because we're getting it backfilled, my cake will be smaller and will get allocated without those people.
So, but that, is that a one-time payment?
Nope, ongoing. It's frozen.
So if we're not, if we're not going to calculate what the personal property is, how will we be able to tell the state how much money they should be giving us?
That's, I think that's why they kept it for one more year. So I have to, well, assessor has to file a report based on the tax bills we send out in December. That's what they will use to determine what that aid payment is. And then I believe that's going to be frozen going forward. So we are still losing, if you have a bunch of new development with a bunch of new personal property that would have been taxed under the old system, that now won't, and we won't get backfilled. But overall, I think the administrative savings is going to be far outweighing that.
So within the personal property tax statute, and I don't know if any of this has changed since I last delved into this, but there, there used to be the computer exemption where the state would reimburse us for the computers, but the, you know, the businesses that owned the computers didn't have to pay that tax. Is that still part of this?
So it's not part of this, but that is still continuing. So that computer exemption aid payment was frozen also a couple of years ago. So we'll continue to get that same payment as before. There's actually another machinery, tools, and something or another.
Right, for industrial equipment, right.
Which has also been frozen. So we'll still continue to get those separate aid payments, which is a separate bucket of money. This backfill will be just, just based on what is currently assessed as of this year.
But that computer amount is just the same flat amount every year? Doesn't increase, doesn't?
Not anymore.
Even though we have new business, new businesses coming in or businesses that upgrade their equipment? Because we do have a couple, we, we have several fairly large computer intense businesses in the city. And I know that that, at one point, that was a significant portion of what we were getting from the state.
Yeah, to an extent, timing worked out great for us on this because they froze it right after that new data center went in. And you think of computers, they depreciate really fast. So our amount was frozen after that new data center. But there was another new data center after that that we didn't get the benefit for because this amount was just always kept.
Interesting.
So if it's frozen and has never, never increased, do you, do you expect that to go away at some point?
I hope.
Or is it that they just decide not to, not to, to increase it?
So that has been discussed. In fact, as part of the shared revenue, that was one of the early conversations about consolidating all of the different aids that we get into one payment. But that obviously didn't cross the finish line. So I'm hopeful the computer exemption aid will stay on, but you never know.
Yeah, okay, you don't know any talks. So, okay, very good.
Does the MP and MR also included here? You know, the manufacturing personal property tax and the manufacturer real estate?
I believe so.
Okay.
But I'd have to verify with Chris.
Okay.
I know that last year, this repeal actually did get approved. It got all the way to the governor's desk. And he vetoed it because there were some technical issues that they wanted to make sure were addressed, which they now addressed in this version. So I'll find out from Chris, then get back to you, Chris.
This was, the, the personal property tax was all self-reported anyway, right? So it's not, I mean, I know it's a paperwork nightmare, but it probably wasn't causing the assessing department a lot of grief, was it?
I would say it was causing them a lot of grief because they had to follow up with everybody. You know, they send out the notices, the paper notices. Some people submit them, some people don't. Then you have to send a second notice and follow up and do magic and.
The idea is that, the idea is that you don't submit your personal property tax by March 1st, you lost your exemption with the computer. This is the penalty.
Right, I, I, I've paid personal property tax in Pittsburgh. So I, I know how it works. I just, I, I forgot about the doomage assessment that would have to come if people didn't turn to that form.
And it depends on municipality because the City of Madison is pretty good. And, you know, when you open a business, they know, I don't know, because you need to register or something, they know that you're there and they're going to send you the first year your, your personal property tax for. So there are some municipalities that are more aggressive than other ones. So this is what I noticed, so.
Yep. And I'll say our new city assessor did a great thing. So even while we were talking about this repeal, he still went out and did a full review of the city to make sure we did have a full population. And it turned out good because now all of that data that he gathered and all those new accounts that he made sure were paying their fair share are going to be included in that state aid amount going forward. One other note on this one, because I'm sure I'll have to run it through the council, is the TID districts. You know, it's all based on the base value as of when it was created and the incremental value. Personal property coming out of those values could hurt some of our TIDS. So I want to go through that process with the Department of Revenue to recertify our base that excludes the personal property amount so that the TID's not penalized for this change. Other key clauses, we kind of talked about these already. So the levy limits related to TID, the expenditure restraint change. There's also a limit on advisory referenda. So there's a couple of situations where council could still do an advisory referenda, but for the most part, those are prohibited. Another big one for some communities is this act prohibits the discrimination against or granting preferential treatment to persons in certain protected classes when making employment decisions or contracting for public works unless it's required for a federal grant. So this, it doesn't affect the City of Pittsburgh because we don't currently have some of those clauses. But like Dane County gives preferential treatment to some of their contracts if it is a WABB-owned business or a minority-owned business. And that is no longer allowed.
Can we go back to the advisory referenda question?
Sure.
So I presume that what the legislature was targeting is these referenda that various municipalities do to kind of telegraph some message to the legislature that the people living in those municipalities don't like what the legislature is doing.
I believe that's true.
So when we built the library, that was an advisory referendum because the statute didn't really provide for a binding referendum on something like, on, on the library as we were doing it. So we did an advisory referendum. Would that be prohibited by this also?
So there are some exceptions to when you're allowed. Do you have it? Look at you, thank you.
Well, you sent me a memo that I happened to read recently, so.
Excellent.
I have it right here. You read a memo? Absolutely.
It came from me, so it's.
So the act prohibits counties and municipalities from holding advisory referenda with the exceptions for referenda, advisory referenda regarding capital expenditures proposed to be funded with county or municipality property tax revenue, local shared revenue agreements, cooperative boundary agreements, and certain cable and telecommunications. Certain cable and telecommunications operations. So, so the way that reads, we did two referenda for the library. We did one for the construction of the building, and we did another one to ask the residents if we could increase the property tax. And so that would, that would allow the referendum for the capital expense, but not allow the referendum for the operating expense. So you can still do an operating referendum? That's not advisory? That's, that would be a bind, that would be binding? Under that scenario, yeah. The one, the one, when we did it for the library, it was not a bind. Neither one of them were binding. They were both advisory referenda. Yes, in that case, I think you're correct. Interesting.
And then the last item, which is going to fall under, I don't know any more details, is the changes in local authority regarding quarry operations. So I did share this information with Deanna, so she's aware. And I'm sure we're on top of it.
Yeah, this was, that was an early part of the, in the early, in the, included early in the bill. So we had already taken a look at that as we were approving this quarrying. And ultimately, we didn't feel like the changes had a significant impact even on what we were doing at the time. But, you know, another quarry could come along and we might feel differently.
Yep. So structural deficits, I do have my normal plea to you to please don't do structural deficits in here. Those are, structural deficits are things that you're making a commitment in one year, but you're not funding it till the following year or a following year, but not planning for it. So this would be things like mid-year hires for staff, things like the buildings even that we're doing if we don't have a plan for how we're going to fund those operating costs. So just, and using fund balance for things that are ongoing. So I know I've beat this drum a lot of times, so I won't dwell on it. But I continue to think this is important because it just sets you up for problems in the future.
I think you need to add another thing there is using grant to fund staffing. Because that one, grants, you know, like you, you apply for a grant to hire two, three, or four people. That one is structural deficit at the end of the grant, you know what I mean?
Yep, absolutely. So we've already talked about those already, too. So we do have a couple of structural changes in the 2024 budget. So I'm kind of bringing it back to the budget process that City of Pittsburgh is going to go to. We have two, or one new GASB requirement. This is my rule-setting body for how we have to do our financials. That talks about the subscription-based IT arrangements. We have to report those differently. So I'm working with all the departments to make sure they're all identified and put into one spot. So you might see some things moving around because of that. The bigger one is in the past, we've really just looked at new staffing proposals for one year. We've now asked the departments to share with us what their new staffing proposals are for the next five years so that council can have a good picture about what all of those identified items are, but also help prioritize, recognize that we can't do it all in one year by any stretch. So have some phasing in or some prioritization done at the staff level or the department head level as well before it gets to you. So that information is in there. I'm going to cost them all as though they were done in this year. So it's all going to be kind of ballpark, similar to CIP where we have the front five and the back five that are placeholders. This is going to be the same kind of thing. So you are adopting and approving just the 2024 stuff and the years two through five or more for informational so you know what's on the runway. Budget process and next steps, I go through here. It's all basically the same as before. So the budget is going to be released, the mayor's proposed budget is going to be released in September. We have two finance committee meetings set up for October 3rd and 4th. I hope you all can attend. There's a public hearing on October 10th. Amendments are due on the 13th. We will release those amendments to the elected officials and the public on the 20th. There'll be the discussion of the amendments at the Committee of the Whole on the 25th. I'll remind you, the intention is that all of the discussion on the amendments happens at the Committee of the Whole. It is a free-flowing conversation. You can talk as much as you want, as many times as you want. You can have a lot of good, healthy discussion about those amendments at that Committee of the Whole meeting. That's important because then November 14th, we'll have a public hearing again and we'll vote on those amendments. You're still able to talk, but there's limits on that. So you can only speak twice on each amendment, including amendments to the amendments. And there's a total time limit there as well. So put in your amendments, your ideas on how you think the mayor's proposed budget could be improved. Have that conversation at the Committee of the Whole meeting, the bulk of it, and then be ready to just vote when it comes to the council. So usually at this point, we stop and ask if you have priorities or new initiatives or services you don't think are as important as others that you could share with the mayor. I suspect in an interest of time, you'd like me to keep moving on, though? Because we still have referendum and such stuff to talk about.
We got time.
Okay. How about I move on and we just move it to the end? So y'all think about it. If you have things that you want to share with the mayor as she's deciding what her priorities are, she would love to hear from you now.
Can I add something? This is why I invite you, I send email to you to talk to each, that you are there for each district is in preparation of the budget. So you, you have some ideas that you want me to include in the budget? Or do you want to discuss something about the budget? This is an opportunity. You know, I already sent an email to all of you. I haven't received any official confirmation yet, so, but I am, you know, try to do it, try to schedule it between now and, and at the end of August.
So now I'd like to talk about, so the last Committee of the Whole meeting, we talked about some other funding source options, and you had some questions. So I have the answers to those. So fire impact fees was one of the big questions. You know, what is our fire impact fee? One of those numbers I just didn't know off the top of my head. So this is the fee schedule for those for 2023. So a single-family home is $622 that they pay currently for a fire protection impact fee. This is the collection of fire impact fees. As we've gone through the years, you can tell which years were our high construction years, especially which years were those big commercial buildings that came on. But we've collected quite a bit of money. commercial buildings that came on. But we've collected quite a bit of money using that fee, and that has gone to pay for the debt currently on the two new fire stations that we recently built. One of the other questions was how that impact fee compares to the total overall building permit fee that a new single-family home would issue. This slide and the next one are both from the Pittsburgh Housing Plan. So it's a few years old at this point, but it should still be more or less in line with what's current. As you can see, per single-family dwelling unit, or per duplex, or per multifamily dwelling unit, what each one of those different components are in the building permit. And then this shows how those amounts compare to other municipalities. So you didn't ask me this, but I was preemptively guessing that you would ask. So this was in our housing plan. So impact fees, I remind you, can only be used for capital items, not for operating, and it can only account for future growth. So if we have an existing deficiency based on our current services that we should be providing, we can't do impact fees to pay for existing deficiencies. One question that was asked was about BRT. Ellers looked into that, and they said, "We might be able to use BRT for capital costs, like the shelters and the facilities, if we can say it's related to new growth, but we can't use it for operating costs of the metro. It's just for the capital things." The police facility is another one that I suspect is kind of on everybody's mind. But I don't think that it really would be a good candidate for this amount. My understanding from the police department is that the reason why we need a new building is because we are growing or like busting at the seams in our current space, and that's our current deficiency. So if we build a building that basically meets what we should have as of now, that can't be used for impact fees. If we build a bigger building and say we will refinish it later, you know, as we hire more people, that additional amount could go towards impact fees. But based on the financial discussion I heard at council last night, I suspect the council's not interested in building a building that's bigger than what you need at this point. So that would be my caution about that. Next steps, if you want to do this, we would hire a consultant. They would perform a needs assessment. They have to do an inventory of our existing facilities, compare it to our existing needs, identify costs of the new facilities, and then have a detailed cost estimate. We would then hold a public hearing, and then we would implement it. So should we talk about impact fees? Is this something you are seriously interested in pursuing at this point? Or is it just for reference only?
But when a police facility is being built, you are building for future growth also. So I'm not getting that statement. I mean, because we're not building it for the last five years or a year. We're building it the last, how many years it's decided? 20, 40 years?
Are you building it to the size that we need for our current staff, though? Or are you building it for a size that's much more based on the new growth? So it's not the length of the building. It's more the size of the building and the amount of square footage that you need for our current staffing levels.
Okay.
Confused because, you know, the message is that we are, we need to have a new police station because we have grown. You know, the city's growing, the growth, the growth. So I assume that this is why we are building a new facility because the city's growing. We're growing our, you know, department. We're hiring more, you know.
Well, I think what Misty's saying is that if we, I'm just going to throw numbers out because I don't have any idea. All right, if we build a 20,000-square-foot facility, if that's what we need, is we need a 20,000-square-foot facility for our current staffing, that would not be eligible for this funding. But if we decide to build a 25,000-square-foot facility, you know, that additional 20% in the cost of the building would be eligible for this fee.
Yeah.
But, but we'd have to, we'd have to figure that out. I mean, how much, how much bigger of a building are we going to build?
78,000 square feet.
Okay, how much of a building do we need? So that's what has to be, that's, that's the calculation that has to be made, is we need to figure out what we need, what our current staffing demands, just to be status quo. And then how much more are we adding to meet future growth?
I don't think that's going to be hard to figure out. I'm just, what we're seeing right here, I think we're there that we're going to be planning for future growth. There's no sense in making a building for what we have now, and then in 10 years, we're going to be adding more officers because of population growth due to the ratio.
Right. But I, but in order to, in order to do this, I mean, we aren't going to be able to do an impact fee for $44 million. We may be able to do an impact fee for $10 million or whatever, but somewhere along the line, we have, we're going to have to do that analysis and figure out what could actually be covered by this.
I wonder if it would be helpful, maybe we could just have a conversation with Ellers and see if they've done impact fees for a public safety facility such as a police department, and get a little bit of background on how that's worked. Because, I mean, obviously, you know, as Elder Wheeler has mentioned, you know, we will ideally be building a facility that will accommodate growth at least, you know, for the next 10 to 20 years.
Yep, absolutely. So generally, we wouldn't use Ellers for this purpose. We would use, like, Chili or Rooker and Milky, but yes, happy to reach out to some people. If that's something this council is interested in doing, is adding a new impact fee, more than happy to do that. It will cost, I would guess, about $20,000 to that needs assessment.
That's only money.
But I think I would be interested in the BRT, too.
So I-
Just can you remind me when the fire impact fees sunset? Because they only have a certain window, right?
Yep, so it's based on dollar amount. So it's somewhere around $3 million that we're able to collect for the fire impact fee, which I suspect will be a couple years from now.
Okay.
Yep. But if we're talking about delaying, say, that police impact fee to when that one falls out, that's two more years of growth that will be an existing deficiency instead of new growth that an impact fee could go towards. So that's kind of a double-edged sword I would want to keep in mind. So I will work with Chad, and we will see how we move forward on that and respond back with some questions about what's realistic and not. The streetlight electricity. So this was the fee where we could charge a separate fee on the utility bill to every property based on the streetlights that their property benefits from. It can only be for the electricity. So based on our 2023 budget, we spent 260,000, or we budgeted $260,000 for streetlights and signals. The signals is not eligible for this fee. It's just the streetlights. So we'd have to separate that out if council was interested in pursuing this option. But that gives you at least a ballpark for what we could be talking about if we implemented this new fee.
So how is the fee calculated over that amount?
To be determined. So we'd have to do a study, again, on some sort of a calculation to figure out how much everybody would be charged with the goal of recovering that $260,000-ish.
Because Oregon just did that, so maybe we can ask them how they did it. I don't know.
Yeah, we'd still have to do our own, though, because it is a specific fee. So we'd have to do our own needs assessment. They hired Ellers to do it, so I'm, yep, we can get a copy of their study, I'm sure.
Yeah, and in a recent conversation I had with their village administrator, don't quote me exactly on the numbers here, but I think if I recall correctly, the fee that they charged for a single-family residential home was $2 per month, I believe, on their utility bill, and in total, this was generating about $100,000 in additional revenue.
Wheel tax. So that was one of the other ones we talked about last time. So the city of Pittsburgh has about 22,000 registered vehicles. So if we did the $40 fee, which seems pretty consistent, it would be $900,000 that we would collect. $20 fee, then $4.50. $10 fee would be $2.25.
That, that money could only be used on transportation issues, though. Is that correct?
Correct. Yep. And I think I have the statute in a little bit.
Oh, yay.
So these are all the communities that currently have a wheel tax and what the dollar amount are, is. So these are the municipalities, and these are the counties. You'll see there's quite a few in Dane County that do, including the city of Madison. And then here's that statute. So yes, any fee that we collect has to be used only for transportation-related purposes. So that's all the statute specifically says, but in general, communities use it for streets resurfacing and street reconstruction, that type of a thing.
Could we use it for a local bus route?
I don't know.
Because that's transportation.
We can pose that question. Maybe the league has some guidance on that.
If we created an east-west bus route, or could we use it to supplement our payments to Madison Metro to improve service in areas, I would like to know that.
We'll find out. Transportation utility district. So Ellers went back and talked to their expert, and they do not believe that Bus Rapid Transit would count for a TUD. However, if you're interested in still pursuing a transportation utility district, we could engage Ellers to help us with that.
What could be eligible for that?
So it's back to transportation-related things. So roads, generally what people use it for is road reconstruction. This one, though, does have a very heavy administrative lift. So this is the one where we have to inventory all of our property owners. We have to go to the engineer manual to figure out how many trips are generated. It also applies to nonprofit businesses as well as government businesses and all of that. So I'm not discounting the value in it. I like that it shifts more cost to the heavier users of our road system. You know, the grocery stores and the convenience stores pay a higher fee than what they would under a property tax system, but there is a pretty administrative burden, and it does tend to have a pretty controversial impact in the community.
Is the administrative burden ongoing, or is that just the front end?
So it'd be ongoing. So obviously, the front end, we'd have to, I want to say it was another $20,000. I feel like everything's $20,000, to hire Ellers to help us with that initial run. But then finance staff and transportation staff would have to maintain that fee, the record-keeping, the billing, the collection. All of that would have to stay up. And then you have to review it every time there's a change in a property.
Those have also been the subject of some litigation as well, the TUDs. Some of the court rulings have been favorable to municipalities, and some have not.
So my suggestion, if you're open to hearing it, would be that we save this option as kind of a Plan M. Get through the other ones first because it is much more limited, but also much more labor-intensive. But again, council, y'all get to decide how we move forward. Referendum process. So this is, of course, the big elephant in the room. I've been talking about perhaps we need to be doing a referendum for several budgets now as our levy limit capacity has been restricting our ability to even meet status quo. So if you're interested in pursuing a referendum, the big questions that we'll need to figure out before we even get to the logistics is going to be what you want to ask for, and then we can talk process. So this is a chart I got from the Wisconsin Policy Forum. I think it really shows how levy limits have started to impact municipalities. I think that's exactly why so many are going to referendum now. You know, we've been able to kind of muddle our way through various short-term answers, but at this point, a lot of municipalities are just at that point where they need to go to referendum. And 2022 was an exceptional year for those. Yes, in that ballpark at least, for about 25 million. And this is just local. So this is just city, village, town, and counties. This does not include school districts. This is just local municipalities. This is the DOR frequently asked questions for the referendum. There's specific ballot language that we have to use. This slide here shows an example. So we do have to be very specific in what we're asking for. So what the increase will be, what the dollar amount is, and then what we're going to use it for, and whether it's ongoing or one time. So I know there was conversation about, do we just ask for a blanket amount? And that's not allowed. We have to say, we want X dollar amount for this, this, and this purpose. And it needs to be very delineated that way. Timing of the referendum. So we are allowed to do it at any of, any of the elections. I suspect that spring would be far too quick for us. I know there's a lot of conversation that we still really should be having to figure out what that ask will be. But if council really wants to get moving on it, we could talk about that and what that timeline would look like. My suggestion, if you're open to it, would be the August partisan primary, simply because of the timing process. So if we get it decided in October, sorry, in August, either yes or no, we at least know that information going into our budget process. If we wait until the November general election, because the question that goes on the ballot has to be submitted many months in advance, and I also have public hearing requirements on the budget process, we would essentially have to run two budget processes, one with the referendum and one without. And you can see how that could get confusing for the public as we're trying to do that. So my suggestion would be that we, we target the August one if this is something the council wants to proceed with.
So there's also, there's also an April election, which probably is too quick also. But I thought, when I was looking at the list of upcoming elections, I thought that it was another one in October.
We're still really far into our process by October, so I have to publish it in the paper like October 15th or something like that.
Okay.
15 days before the public hearing. So I think we'd still be running that, that process.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with August, but that does compress our timeline a little bit.
Yep.
Because, I mean, we're basically a year away.
Yep. It's doable. I mean, a year conversation is reasonable. I think a lot of communities have that length of time. The big question is be, how quickly can this council get on the same page with what that ask is going to be? If that conversation takes a long time, that's going to be what holds us up, not necessarily the outreach and logistics.
So if we hire a consultant to assist us with this, how much will that cost? Let me guess.
No, more than that.
Oh.
Ellers is going to, I think it was between $5,000 and $10,000 for Ellers's help. But then we would also want an outreach consultant to help us with that education piece, too. I don't want to necessarily throw out numbers, but it's much higher than $20,000.
Ah, darn it.
Yeah.
And then would that, whatever that amount would be, would that cover the cost of mailings to the residents to, or is that an additional postage and printing and everything?
Yeah, so that would have to be a conversation. So I really want to see if council is interested in going down this path before we start reaching out to consultants and getting permission to move forward. But that's a good question.
Maybe this would be a good time to pause and kind of gauge the council's interest in having staff pursue additional referendum information. Because obviously, if there's not a general consensus by the council to move forward, it may not be the best decision by the council to move forward. Does that make sense?
Yeah, if we are going to move forward, I would love to get those two contracts done in the next month so that we can start the rest of the conversations.
The question is whether or not to have a referendum?
Whether to, well, whether to move forward with the process, I guess. So not what the referendum will be, but if we're seriously interested in having a referendum.
My answer is yes.
Is that all it is? Is just a simple yes, no, or is there, do we have to forward a resolution onto council? Something more formal?
Oh, ultimately, we'll have to do all that, yeah.
Absolutely. We're just trying to obviously gauge direction from the council here to determine, you know, whether or not you support moving forward with exploring a referendum.
What would happen if we didn't have a referendum?
I think you will really start to struggle paying for even your status quo. So we have that shared revenue for this coming year, that supplemental shared revenue. That's really going to help as a Band-Aid for us, but it's definitely not a long-term solution for us, especially considering the new police facility that's going to have ongoing cost, that and the hub as well.
And a staffing study comes at the end of this month, or?
In a couple of weeks.
August 9th, it'll be presented at the Personal Committee.
Got it. Thanks.
So I want to add what Misty says, like, you need to take a look at what happened in the last 10 years, you know, like, and what happened after, you know, COVID and inflation. It was a great combo for our expenditure, you know, cost of construction. And the levy limit was something that was constant, you know, something that we cannot move, and all of the other things start growing up. And the city's growing, you know, so the growth, the inflation- the inflation, the cost of, you know, supplies, construction is, you know, is up, you know? And even we are not going to have capacity to hire any new person in the future. If we don't, you know what I mean? That one is the other thing, you know what I mean? So is, you know, we are really, levy limit is, is, I think we are feeling the effect of levy limits right now. I think the first couple of years, the city has some, you know, maybe excess of capacity. But then in the, you can see in the last couple of budgets, since I have been in the, in the council in the last eight years, you know, that capacity was reduced every year, every year, every year. And then, you know, we can make 2024 budget balance, but to be honest, I don't know what we're going to do in '25. And we don't want to, I don't want to, you know, to think that we need to go to the, you know, to reduce services, or you need to start laying off people, you know what I mean? So we don't want to, I don't want to do that. Exactly.
Well, I think the questions that I was looking for answers tonight is, I wanted to find out where the council is on this. I think from our last meeting, I got the sense that, that pretty much everybody supports the idea of going forward with a referendum. So if that's what we support, that's the first step. The next step is, what do we want to include in the referendum, or what would be the wish list of a referendum, so that staff can start working on, on those, you know? And I, like, I sent that list out. I have no idea what an east-west bus route for Pittsburgh would cost. But I'd like to know that, because I think that's something that we desperately need, and that should be included in the referendum, in my view. Now, you know, this is all stuff that we will hash out later, once we have some, some better numbers. But I think if we're going to try to do this in August, you know, that's a year away, and, and staff needs to start working on stuff, so that we can, you know, we can make it happen. That's probably August 2024 election.
Yeah.
At the bottom of your list.
Oh, yeah, it is.
So my, one specific, very specific thing that I think we need is expansion of the bus route from where it stops currently on McKee to get to Lacy Road, so that it can get to our civic campus. Yeah. I mean, even if it's not a BRT, if it's like, stop, get off, get on a regular bus, whatever makes more sense, I think that's a clear need. I think the city hall needs to be accessible by, by bus. The other thing I would be interested in looking into is the implementation of cares. As I'm reading this article, and as I've kind of had conversation with Alders from the City of Madison and county supervisors, there's a desire to expand it beyond the City of Madison. And I think there, that's been a discussion on whether that should be, yeah, it's in this article. It's whether that should be a county effort, or whether municipality should pay into it. But, you know, it's something that's shown clear success since it's been implemented. And I would be interested in determining whether that's something we would want to have here.
Might be an interesting innovation fund option, too, if that's something seriously considered.
So, Bill, Gabriella, I haven't heard anything from you yet, or Shannon?
I'm in support of moving forward, looking at this. I think the things that you laid out, Jay, in your email, are good. I also think that, I also, I agree with transit. I think public transit, expanding that in the city could be a huge, I think that would be a good use of the money. Because I don't know how, I don't see how we can do it without a referendum. But I do think it, it would be an important priority for the city. So I think that should be considered. But definitely open to more conversation, but I'm interested in the staff continuing to look into it.
Yeah, I think full agreement. Sounds like, I mean, we're facing some hard times. We're going to need some more money, and something like public transit is something that I'm personally very interested in as well. You know, as noted earlier, the bulk of our budget is in personnel, but, you know, it's hard to justify asking for additional money when shared revenue now is an increase that kind of has to be used for that kind of expenditure. So, I guess those are my thoughts.
Bill, would you mind repeating, there was a bit of audio issues here for us in the council chambers. If you could at least summarize what you just said, please?
Yeah, I'm in full agreement with the sentiments that Gabriella echoed. And I think, you know, as mentioned earlier, the, the bulk of our budget is in personnel, but, you know, with the shared revenue increase that is going to be spent largely on public safety personnel, it's, you know, it's hard to ask for a referendum that's personnel-related, I think. Something like, you know, providing additional services, such as transit, is the better way to go.
Thank you.
Shannon, Randy, any thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I'm in agreement as well on the transit. I'd like to see something. But, I mean, I don't know if the, I'd like to wait to see what the, the study tells us. But I haven't heard much information about above and beyond shared revenue to support public safety. I think it's important if this referendum addresses not a population of 32,000, or whatever it may be, but also what it's going to be, we should be looking forward to 40,000. But it's just my thought.
Yeah. I want to, I want to give Shannon a chance to say something here.
Oh, I'm, I just gotta kind of think about things a little bit, that's all.
Okay.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Yeah, just adding to the conversation about staffing. So if there's restrictions with shared revenue about what type of staff can be spent, I would say that part of a referendum may focus on staff that's not covered in that, those requirements. So I've heard, you know, a lot of departments express need for additional staff. We should make sure we have kind of solid information on what those needs are going to be in the future. And maybe if we make specific asks around a cluster of departments, that may additionally be a, an ask that could be in a referendum.
Transportation and, you know, whatever personnel, I don't know without the staffing study, so. But transportation, for sure.
So I'm just looking ahead at our Committee of the Whole agendas, and I, I may try to, based on what Misty has put up here, I may try to squeeze in some more discussion at the September meeting. The, the August meeting is pretty full. So I think at the September meeting, we should come back and maybe have some discussion about specific options. But between now and then, you know, feel free to send an email. You can send an email to Misty and Chad and the mayor, and suggest things that you would like to see. And then we can get some cost analysis, you know, because we're going to have, at some point, we're going to have to come up with a number. And it, and it's going to have to include some specific line items. And I presume that we're not all going to agree on everything that's proposed. So we're going to have to hash some things out and come up with something that we can be unified on. So I think if we can add that to the September Committee of the Whole meeting, just more discussion on this. But between now and then, please let staff know what you would like to see. So I, I presented that initial list in the email that I sent out with the six firefighters, a firefighter command staff, an HR staff, and an east-west Pittsburgh route, bus route. I know that there are more things that we need, but mainly, this is, this referendum is to increase our operating expenditures. So I didn't include anything capital in there, because that happens through a different process. This is just, but we, but now that, now that we're talking about it, we probably should figure out what we will have to hire for additional staffing for the police facility. So it's going to be a big building. It's going to need maintenance staff. It's going to need janitorial staff. It's going to, I don't know what else is going to be needed. But maybe we need to add one or two positions for that facility, so that that burden isn't something we have to absorb in the future budget. But, you know, these are, so the, maybe you can add that to my list. So I don't know what other things we should talk about. We probably, maybe we can add the hub staffing to this, whatever the hub staffing is going to be, because that's going to be another bump. But I would, I guess, right now, over the next 60 days, staff needs to evaluate how much these things are going to cost, so they can come back to us and say, you know, here's, your wishlist is going to cost X amount. Do you want to pursue this? Do you want to cut some things out? What do you want to do? But we should keep in mind that if we come up with ideas that we want to, that we want to do, and we add them to the referendum, or we have staff do an analysis, and then we decide we don't want to do them, adding those things later is going to be very difficult, because we have to wait to do another referendum how long?
I think just the next election.
Oh, I thought there was a, I thought to do this kind of referendum, you had to wait a certain amount of time?
Not that I'm aware of, but doesn't mean it's...
Well, in any event, I don't know that we want to go back to the voters every year and say, hey, can we increase your taxes again? So, so please get that kind of information to staff, and we'll, excuse me, we'll know more after we have the staffing study on August 9th. And I'm going to die here, but hopefully, hopefully we can get something moving. So in September, hopefully by the end of September, we can have an idea, we can have a fairly firm idea of how much we want to ask for in the referendum, what the impact is going to be. Because I, I think, you know, we've got the, the discussion there in March and April about the ballot question. And my personal preference would be to have a public hearing on the ballot question, just, you know, so that we're engaging the public as much as possible. Because I think, you know, this is an important thing, and I want to make sure we do it right. So I appreciate the, the timeline that Misty put together here. I think that's good.
And if I may, this is something that Misty just put together based on a conference presentation I went to. So the other thing I'd like to do is, there's a consultant, an outreach consultant that's really the leader in this game. I'd love to reach out to them and ask them, you know, what their pricing would be, of course. Would have to get that preapproval through all of you guys to engage with them. But I'd also love for them to come to a meeting with you guys to talk about what's worked in other communities. You know, what are things that we should think about? What are things we should make sure we don't think about, or don't consider, or don't include, and kind of more of that process stuff. So this is a true, just very approximate timeline. They would be much more educated in that, that effort.
So is that something we would want to do at a council meeting, or at a Committee of the Whole meeting? Well, since we only have the August meeting, and that one's pretty full, do we want to schedule an additional Committee of the Whole meeting between the August and September meetings for that to happen?
I think we could potentially consider that, although we would probably need to have the consultant engaged under contract before they're even going to come in. So I'm not sure they'll be available and willing that early. The other thing we can also do is if, you know, depending on topics, if, you know, we have to reprioritize topics, too, we can always use an existing Committee of the Whole.
Sure.
And, and replace the, the agenda, or update the agenda to reflect a more pressing priority.
All right. Well, let's put a bookmark there.
Well, may I also just suggest, too, that if it's a discrete part of the conversation we have to have, perhaps we could do it as a discussion item on a council agenda, you know, towards the end. Just, if, you know, if we need, if we have a conversation, that could, that could be a tight 20 or 30-minute discussion. Just a thought.
Misty? Misty, do you remember if we have in the ARPA investment plan some money allocated for this referendum? I think I saw something, isn't it?
We do.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. In fact, I think we may have included it in the 2023 budget amendment.
Yeah.
So if this is something council's open to doing, and if, especially if you're open to kind of moving on fast track, I'd love to get a direct referral to the next meeting to get these two contracts, at least so it's an option for us. But we'll, I have to reach out to them. They don't even know that we're talking about this yet. So we'll have to see what their
Surprise!
Their timeline is. But some of the best practices that I heard, again, at that conference, was that that education piece is so important. And it can't just be a, hey, this is what we want to do. It needs to be a, this is what our, or should be, this is what our problem is. These are the different ways that we could address it, and this is how we got here. Not just the shoving it down the throats of the voters, but like, explaining how, the journey that we took, and kind of welcoming them to the journey of how we're getting to where we're getting. And that's something that they're really good about doing. I've seen some of the pieces they've done for other municipalities with really great visuals and just a great, tight story. That's what we don't have written. I think we all have it in our head, but it's not written.
Well, you had a couple of charts in your presentation tonight that I think were really helpful in understanding why this is, this is a pressing need.
I think you want to see some, I don't know if the Middleton, City of Middleton still have, has in their website. But, you know, they went to a, to a referendum in last November, and they have a lot of education tools and graphs and everything in the website. I don't know if that information is still on the website, but this is another way that you can go and take a look how they did it. My other comment is, you know, I would like to see in the referendum, because you didn't ask me.
It wasn't, I sent an email out to everybody.
No, you didn't ask me if I am favorable against you. But I think we need to, I think we need to consider staffing, you know, operating, you know, staffing, and look at the, look at the, at the study, and the Baker-Tiller study, and determine, you know, what are the staffing that we are not going to be able to allocate in the 2024 budget, and what are the things that, the staffing that we need to, to be, to hire, or to be in the pipeline for the growth that the city is going to experience in the next 10 years, too. We need to think about all of that, too. You know, I feel, I think that we, as a council, this body need to be comfortable with the decision. This is why, you know, we are here to make difficult decisions, okay? This is our role. And we need to look at the, at the long-term financial sustainability of the city. I know this is a very hard topic, a very difficult conversation, but we need to think about the future of the city. And I would feel more comfortable if, when we decided, I think that we, I think most of us feel comfortable with this, we need to be unified with our voice to the community. So that one, it would be great, you know, because we are doing that for the better of our community. It's going to be hard? Yes. It's a difficult conversation that we are going to have? Yes. But I think we are here to make this difficult decision. And I will ask, you know, this is what will be my And I will ask, you know, this is what will be my, how we need to move forward as, as a council, um, you know, looking at this process. I think we need to, um, to have this difficult conversation. And we are going to be very uncomfortable, very uncomfortable. I always believe that when we have those difficult and comfortable conversations, we are going to come, come out with a better solution for the city. So this is my, my goal for this process.
May I maybe conclude some of the conversation? I don't want to prematurely conclude it, but it seems like folks have all said, uh, what their, at least some preliminary thoughts are. I've jotted them down. Misty and I will take a, a look at them, but I just want to let council know that I'll begin based on the conversation to engage Metro and at least maybe get some cost estimates on what an east, right, east-west, uh, connection that would include city hall, um, might cost for some conversation and determination for the referendum. And then obviously staffing came up here as well. How yet?
Specifically, what I'm also thinking is an expansion of BRTs, north or south.
Sure. Well, we already have rough numbers on, on expansion of BRT.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. So, and then, uh, as we talked about earlier, that what, what we're tentatively planning is that perhaps the TID could cover BRT down to McKee. And then, you know, we've got some cost estimates, but I'll reaffirm those from McKee down to, um, down to, uh, city hall and then also looking at an east-west connector, uh, that would include city hall also. And then from a staffing perspective, uh, certainly the Baker-Tilly, uh, study will be an important piece of that, but it's important to note that that's just one piece of the staffing, uh, puzzle. It may not be the ultimate authority, so to speak. As Misty mentioned earlier in the process, when she talked about bus, budgeting, uh, new proposals from department heads will also be important as, you know, typically we only ask for one year at a time, but we are asking them to forecast staffing needs for the next five years. Uh, and, whereas Baker-Tilly is, uh, more than likely focusing on more pressing needs, you know, over the next, you know, say 12 to 24, maybe 36 months. So we want to try to get a full picture over the next five years and use both of those pieces, so to speak, for council to use as information. As many of you have mentioned, we definitely don't want to have to go back for referendum any, anytime soon if we ultimately decide to do that.
Can I ask a question? Can we include, I know that the senior center is also looking for a shuttle and, you know, can we, I don't know if that, we can include that, I don't know, you know, like...
Not for the shuttle, that'd be a capital expense, but potentially the operating side of it. One option could be, you know, there are probably multiple, but, uh, if we do have transit, uh, my understanding is paratransit typically follows, uh, the same route. So that could be a potential option as well, um, from a senior center, uh, transit.
Yeah. If we, if we, if we establish an east-west bus route that's a, goes from Southdale through the, through city hall, the library, and then over to the, uh, Target and that area, if we establish that kind of route and we contract with Madison Metro to provide it, my understanding is that their paratransit will cover anything within, I think it's a mile or a half mile.
I think it's a half mile.
A half mile of established route. So, yeah, so, um, that would, that would meet a lot of the senior centers' needs, um, for being able to get people here. I know she, I know that Joe wants to have a, a more, a more on-demand service, but, um, I, I don't, I have some questions about the city owning a bus and trying to operate it ourselves or even owning, uh, some, because just having one vehicle like that, um, with one driver or how, you know, one or two drivers, I think that creates a situation that's not going to have the reliability. But if we, if we can work through Madison Metro with the paratransit system, I think that's a better option. But I'm sure Chad will get more information. What?
You said Joe, me or, or Joe, the fire chief?
Jill.
Jill, okay, sorry.
Jill. Jill, Jill, the senior center director.
I'm like, when did I say that?
So the only other questions I guess I had for council, which I think I've got our direction, so, uh, we would hire Ellers, obviously, as our financial consultant. The big question would be if we want them to be a participant in the conversation about what we should ask for. And my gut is that we probably don't need them for that level of detail, that we can kind of figure that out amongst ourselves and with the outreach consultant, but still hire Ellers for the more mechanics and logistics piece of it is kind of what I'm thinking. And then the outreach consultant, I'd like to go with the, the person that's kind of the expert in the area, has had lots of successful, though also some not successful, uh, referendums, uh, but has done a great job with some of those pieces. But then they'll help us figure out, you know, who's going to help us identify. Is it staff? Is it the community? Is it the committees? Is it just council and all of that stuff? So I'll talk, I'll reach out to them, kind of get what their recommendation would be for us, and then we'll bring something forward for council to get a contract signed.
I, I think, um, since you brought that up, um, we should probably get input from all the department heads about things that they think are such, that are pressing enough priorities, um, that they, that they feel they should be included. I mean, I, I know without even asking that HR needs help. And I'm sure that the staffing study will identify some things, but there may be, there may be other things that aren't covered by the staffing study that, uh, that the department heads may be aware of that just haven't been able to fit into the budget, so.
Yes, absolutely.
I want to thank, uh, Misty for the presentation, uh, very thorough as always, and thank you to the elders, uh, and the mayor for sharing your thoughts and, uh, providing some direction on what you'd like to see, uh, for staff to be working on related to this.
All right. Any other discussion on that item? So, uh, the next, um, the next item is announcements, which is our meeting in August.
On August 23rd.
And, um, there, so currently what we have on the agenda for that meeting is an overview of the water and well system, a discussion about committee, commission and board term limits, um, a, and project updates on the teen center, the hub and the police facility. So, um, we could probably fit something in, we could probably fit more discussion about the referendum into that meeting, um, although, and I, I don't know, Jim, how...
You could take term limits off. I, I got some additional information. I'll talk to the mayor about it.
Oh.
On the committees.
Well, okay then.
Well, and I will add that, uh, tentatively speaking, Paul Witterd is planning to come to the August 22nd, uh, council meeting to provide an update on the police facility process and timeline, uh, so that could also potentially free up some additional, uh, capacity in the committee of the whole for continued referendum conversation.
Okay then. Well, we're, our, our schedule's getting lighter as the day goes on.
You and I can keep in contact over the next couple of weeks and finalize.
Well, the, I think the teen center and the hub are still going to take some time.
Sure.
So, um, but let's, let's go ahead and add the more referendum discussion in on the August meeting and, um, hopefully by then, all of you will have had a chance to look at the, um, um, the staffing study and come up with any other ideas that you think maybe we can get, um, some staff input, um, prior to that meeting, uh, if they just want to send any, or you want to accumulate comments and...
They'll all have their submissions in through the budget process.
And I have some new position too.
All right. Well, throw, throw it out there and let's get everything, let's get everything, uh, that we think we might want to do into this proposal. And, um, then we can get some costs to it and figure out, you know, how much do we want to ask for? So I think that's the, I think that's where we're at. So with that...
I'm Luther German.
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Joe. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.